The Highland Village City Council Work Session today is September 24th and it's 6:00 PM. And we are going to get started with an annual presentation from Republic Services. Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It seemed like it had been that long, but we're kind of up on here with our new trench service for Republic. We don't have the September data because September's not closed out yet, so this is actually an 11 month report. It's been a wonderful year. You know, we had the cart business, we delivered all the new 95 gallon carts to everybody. With a little heartburn with it, yeah, how's that going, Wayne?
Yeah.
Disaster storm event that came through that Republic responded to as well as the city hiring some third-party contractors. But all in all, everything's going great with our new service. I wanted to introduce Cheryl Brock. She is our municipal sales manager for Republic, and she'll take the show.
Good evening, I'm Cheryl Brock with Republic Services. Thank you for having me. So we'll talk a little bit about the past 11 months. And so if you have questions and you want to stop me during it, or if you want to have questions at the end, either one is okay with me. So we started last October. Everything seemed to be pretty good, and what I've started here is from October going forward. So what this report does is it gives us all the information and tonnage. So it just gives you, we have the total at the end and then the average. So we measure the residential tonnage, the trash, your industrial, your commercial, and of course your total at the end. Your recycle, as far as the residential single-stream recycling, your yard waste, come down here, it's all the services. And then we do a total of all of the recycling. So you get a good idea of the percentages for the total of what we take in from y'all. So actually, y'all do an amazing job of recycling compared to a lot of the other cities that we do. By far, you beat most of, even the larger cities that we have that have a lot of recycling. Y'all do great. Your yard waste, your residential recycling is by far fantastic. So you did a total trash tonnage of the year. I'm going to use mine since I'm at an angle here. But it looks like it's 9,553 tons, which is an average monthly of 888 tons a month, which is fantastic. Recycling, they told, ooh, I left out a whole month right there of labels. Your residential recycling that you do, fantastic. And that means just the recycling carts that come from the homes, which is this line right here. All of that's just from what we pick up from the homes per month. The yard waste, very good. And then your totals. So for the total of the year of just all of your recycling that you do, yard waste, carts, it comes to 2,821 tons. So all your services, your recycling, your trash comes to a total, I can't be right, it says 7,515.
I was going to say that.
Pardon?
Shouldn't that number be that number, 9553 and 2821?
That's probably the truth. I'll have to check on that. But overall, from what y'all do, the percentages of your recycling total here that you have, please. But I don't understand, they must have reversed these. Your single-stream recycling is 76% in October, and it fluctuates every month. Could be high one month, it could be low another. Your recycling totals for the month, so you go all the way down, we just do the average. So your, for single-stream recycling, your average is 37.63% per month. Your yard waste is 27.37 per month on your average every time.
Sorry, what was diversion rate again?
Pardon me?
What was diversion rate again? What was the definition of that?
The diversion rate, this is actually going to tell you a bigger diversion rate. On just the single-stream, 37.66 is your average.
Yeah, but average of what? What is diversion rate?
Per month, that's just of your single-stream recycling.
What does diversion mean?
That you are taking out of total tons of trash and recycling, that 37% is recycling.
Got it, okay.
Now, the next one what we do is we take all of your recycling, this would be for the entire year. So this is how we, since I'm doing it, well, the entire year, it would be 11 months. This one, my glasses off because this is much easier to do. And this is in total tons. So we start off by taking all of the tons for the year, and then we equate it to how it's measured. And there's a recycling calculator. So for instance, the kilowatt-hours of electricity saved, and this is in millions, this is this one right here, was 11.69 million. And this is based off of this amount of tons that you've recycled through the year. You have household annual energy consumption is just 372 million tons. Gallons of oil saved, 6,874. The MBTU, which is net energy reduction, million, which is, they use the British thermal units, 39,872. And I can get you copies of any of this if you want.
Is this net, is this net of the energy required to recycle?
Pardon?
Are those numbers net of the energy it costs to recycle?
Total greenhouse gas reduction in metric tons, 8,342. And this is equivalent of one of the following. So gallons of gas used would be 946,861. Or passenger cars not driven for one year would be 1,528. Gallons of water saved in the millions is 18.36. And landfill airspace saved cubic yards, 9,180, which is the most important as far as around us. Because we all know the landfills only have a certain amount of airspace left in years, and that's very important for us around here. And then the number of mature trees saved, 31,476. So by recycling, I mean, saves you disposal and tonnage, which lowers your cost overall, which helps your residents by far. And this is one of the things that we try to measure, just to give you an impact of. I know recycling, they always say, well, it always costs to process it. It's cheaper than putting it in the landfill when you talk about how many years you save for landfill airspace. And I'm sure that most of you know, but our recycling facility is in Plano. We do offer tours, schools go through it all the time, colleges go through it, all different types of organizations, cities go through it. You're welcome at any time if there's anyone that wants to go through, or you know of a group, we'd be more than happy to take them to it. It is an amazing facility to see. It's got robots, all kinds of different things that actually process it, that go through it. One of the neat things about our recycling facility is we have a way of taking contamination out, the majority of the contamination out at the very beginning. So it does not get processed through, which is a big advantage. Participation. So this is how we calculate on the household, how many times we, you know, touch. There's pickups during the week. What's your percentages of how many set-outs for trash, for recycling, for yard waste? And what this does is it gives us an idea of the participation that you're receiving. Not everyone, they may not have recycling that week, they don't take it out. They may just have set it out once, they may set it out every week. So this tells us how many participants have overall. So this is for your recycling. So you see in October, 60% was the average participation. In November, 68. December was 88. That's not unusual because of there's so much more that can be recycled in December. It dropped down to 59 in January, February 49, back up in March, 69. So you can see the average. If you look at, the very average at the end is 72, which is a very good participation throughout the year. And then down here, we give you a little bit of data on the deliveries. The cart deliveries, the container exchanges, and then repair and replacement. So because they're new carts, you're not going to see very much in this line, but anything to do with the container replacement, that's not charged to the resident, that's what we take care of. So we started out like at 110 deliveries, maybe someone wanted an extra cart, or they, maybe they, an exchanges, maybe they didn't want a recycle cart, or they wanted to send their other trash cart back in. This gives you an average of just what we do and bringing them back in, taking them back out. I had a lady today that had her blue cart taken away because it was too difficult for her to handle. So after visiting with her, she had, was putting bags at the street. So I talked to her, and we have a program for anyone that's handicapped or elderly, if they can get what we call a backdoor service or a handicap service. Where we will come, the driver will get out of his truck, and wherever she places her trash, maybe it's by her garage or her recycle. Maybe it's by her garage, some of it have it like a little breezeway. Then the driver will get out and handle that for them, empty it, take it to the truck, take it back and set it. So that way they don't have to do that. So now she wants her blue cart back because she won't have to handle it. That's something that is free that we do, and like for the residents to know about it. Yes.
How many do we have in Highland Village on that program?
Right now, I think there's about 15. But she mentioned that there is a family of three that she's going to talk to them about because they can't do it at all. So, but that is something that we do recommend. So y'all have door-to-door e-waste, HHW. And how that works is they call, tell us what they have, or they can email. And then we send out bags to cover whatever it is, a bag or a box, that they can put their item in, put it on the front door, and then we go and pick it up and tell them when it's going to be picked up. So what this does is give you an idea of how much we do or pick up, the call-ins, and it works great. Y'all have a high participation rate, and so, I'll look on mine too. But you can tell that it's definitely being used more and more. People are finding out about it. I had a man that called me, that's 80 years old, his wife was out of the country. And he was scared to death because he had a lithium battery that he was told that it was defective, and he just knew it was going to blow up in his house. And I explained to him, it'd be fine if he wanted to call in. He said he had tried the email and it bounced back, and I think he was just, I would be afraid if I didn't know. So I checked the email, it was fine, but, so he said, you know, what do I do with it? I said, well, we'll come pick it up. And he said, well, how soon can you pick it up, like today? And I said, I tell you what, give me your address, I'll come pick it up, and that way it'll be off your property. So I said, just put it in a box and put it on your front door. And so, you know, we picked it up for him so he wouldn't worry about it. Because it is kind of scary, lithium batteries can take a recycling facility and burn it to the ground, which should happen to one of ours in Plano. So it's nice if they're using it and they're understanding what can be done, what can be recycled. But this just gives you an idea of how many residents are using it, and you can look at the graph here. It kind of tells you, it's definitely HHW, which is awesome, that there's a place for it to go, and then, thank you, actually have it picked up. Missed services. So how we track this is if they call into the, they call into customer service, if they call into me, I report it just like they do. I send it directly to the girls that track everything. So, and this would be trash, recycle, bulk, and yard waste is how we measure it. And we track it, oh, November, November, changed, didn't change that one. So it goes from month to month, how, some month to high, like total service, 109, 127, 141, 93106. So this information, besides y'all getting this information monthly, this also goes to our general manager, to the supervisors, and the operations managers, so that he sees what's going on. We have meetings daily with the ops supervisors of the cities, so they are kind of targeted on this to look and see in the city what's going on. Are the drivers not reporting? If the drivers aren't reporting, and we have high occurrences, then they will do what they call a PDV. So if they have a customer that keeps saying they're missed, they're missed, they're missed, they will take a PDV, and if a cart's not out when they go by, then they'll take it on a person that calls in all the time. And one is to see, are they truly being missed, or is it a late set-out? And the only reason they do that is if it's a late set-out, they just want to encourage the resident that, because usually they'll call in and say, I was the only one on my street that you picked up. And if it happens over and over, it's not to get on to the resident, it's just say, the set-out time is 7:00 AM. And so we help them that way to understand that sometimes they're just not getting it out early enough, sometimes they don't know. Or it's our driver. And if our driver comes back and there's no problem, the cart's there, then that's where we have a conversation with the driver. Most of the times our drivers are really good, but every once in a while you'll have a driver that needs to have a little bit of encouragement. And then this is also how we track it. So you can see when we first took over, the trash was an issue. And we have it where they have tablets, they have route sheets, and a lot of them when they first start, they think they're just going to memorize the route. And that's great, a lot of them as we do it, they can memorize the route, but not in the beginning. So this is where we track it and try to get them to improve it. There's like, it looks like in June, and maybe August. We do have drivers, of course, that go on vacation, they have substitute drivers, but we have a lead driver in sections of the city. And that lead driver is to coach the other drivers that step in to make sure that they're following the correct route, and not doing it by memory. Property damage. So if a resident calls and there's a problem, they've had damage, the operations supervisor will go out and look at it. If it's something that needs to be monetarily repaired, then they get ahold of the insurance, they file a claim. The insurance company will get with the resident, go out and visit with them, and then they will repair whatever damage has been made. So if anyone should ever contact the city and say that, or, you know, any of y'all, and say that they had damage, they need to contact us, and we'll get it taken care of. And then free landfill usage. So when your residents go to the landfill, we track how many tons came in each month, the savings, and how many, we would equate to free hauls, how many hauls came in. So this tells you at the end what was saved by the discount that y'all get, the average, and then how many people came in, the free hauls is what it is. How many people came in for that month? And then, of course, on an annual basis, on the contract, there is a price increase that goes through. The price increase for Highland Village is 4%. So when they went through, and this is what you were paying, 10-1, this will be the new price. That shows your increase, and it's broken down really nice. There is a 10% for franchise, which, you know, that's paid back to the city. Cities do whatever they want to do with that. It could be fix the roads, it could be, you know, designated to parks, whatever they want to do. And then there's, this is, sales tax coming in, and then the compost processing that the city has. So that would be the total dollars that the residents would see. If everything's taxable and less than, that will be what their new price would be for the company on October 1st. You want to have any questions?
What is the compost processing?
When it's taken, our trucks, when they take the composting to the facility, that's really not something that they charge us for. I think it's an agreement with the city.
Right, we have a contract with the Lepco in Firemano and Roanoke, there's several facilities all over the place, and they make mulch. So they, Republic hauls it for us, collects it and hauls it. When they get to the dump facility, their trucks get weighed, and then the city is billed by tonnage monthly.
So is it, they make mulch and compost, is it like Dittens Dino Dirt, can you purchase it?
You can go, they sell it at Lowe's.
Okay, so it's retail, it's not through the facility that, okay, it's not like the Dittens Dino Dirt.
Living Gurus acknowledge you can buy it in bulk at their locations.
Yeah.
Yeah, not like this program, yeah.
Mayor Kells, have any questions?
How many trucks service on a typical day, the city?
With all the different recycle, trash, I think there's probably five different, six different trucks in all the different areas.
And then going back to the information at the beginning, you don't slide back through, but is the battery considered commercial, or is it considered residential?
It's a mixture.
Okay, so it is tracked in that way? Okay, good.
Coming out? Appreciate being with me.
Thank you.
Scott.
Mayor Kells, just for clarification, on the 4% increase, in the past contracts, it was based on the CPI, and they would have to submit a letter by a certain time every year. Council would have to prove that, in this contract, it's simply a 4% each year. If they choose to do less, they do have to give notice for that, and that's just to make sure that we can get everything in play to change that billing, beginning on October 1st.
When we started the contract, what was the average monthly savings to the resident? Do you recall?
Well, I'm a pan, I do not. It was savings.
I'm just trying to relate to how much this is going to be increased to the consumer.
We'll get there, we'll send it out to you.
And you had any conversations about the brown trash cans?
Oh, no, we, yeah.
Republic Services does not offer yard waste carts. However, they will put us in contact with their vendor. The city can purchase the carts, and they'll service them with the rear-load trucks. The whole point of getting this contract going was the city was getting out of the cart business. So, you know, the city would purchase the carts, maintain them, add the costs, labor hours.
And I didn't hear what you said, the whole point of this contract was the city was getting out of them?
We were getting out of the cart business. We owned all the carts, blue carts, sorry, previous to this contract. That was, you know, through Waste Man.
Present the brown carts and dent, or dent carts, not Republic carts.
Yeah, they do not have a contract with you.
No, Dittens does all of its in-service, they all do everything in-house.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, President, marketing and branding strategies for Pilot Hill Park, those cabins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, Dunaway, Bradwood Dunaway is going to provide some information on the branding and marketing strategies for Pilot Hill Park, and also the cabins. In addition to that, he's also going to provide information from last Monday's park board meeting and some of their thoughts and opinions about branding work. I'm going to turn it over to him.
Good evening, good to see you again, Mayor and Council, thanks for the time. So what, I've got a brief presentation here that we'll just go over on some of the concepts that we started to develop for this, the branding effort. What this is, is, you know, three concepts that we just, we wanted to talk to you as well as park board last week, and just get some direction on a preferred concept to start exploring a little bit more. You'll see a brand, Civic Brand is our partner on our team working on this in terms of how this concept can first be developed within these three families that we're going to show you, but then also, we're going to then work with them on the physical application of that within the park. So signage, logos, and how that would be built into the park. But what we're talking about this evening is, But what we're talking about this evening is, is, you know, three unique concepts to really just get the, you know, the juices flowing so that we can then kind of focus in on one, if not two of those, to then start developing so that, uh, we can bring back a thoughtful brand. Um, what we're going to talk from is kind of a, this, the starting, uh, position of a parent brand. So whether that is, and this is concept one that we're going to kind of look at, uh, briefly, but, um, you know, this, like, just the, the term Pilot Knoll Park, you know, in a, in a recognizable font, adding the Highland Village kind of locational-based tag to that and then adding, um, even the, the moniker, the, the icon of the tree. So this being a parent brand of the park itself, where that could be on the, uh, main entry sign, maybe even branding, uh, marketing elements, uh, you know, on the reservation site as well. Uh, but what we're looking at too is how to match, um, some material items with the cabins, the gatehouse, uh, into this signage as well. So within that parent brand, a sub-brand has been developed on these concepts to say, you know, even within this, this park, we have the boat ramp, we have the day use area, we have the cabins. Um, you know, specifically focusing on kind of the retail aspect of it with the rentable cabins. Um, we feel like there is this opportunity to look into even a sub-brand within the park. Um, you know, creating either marketing material in terms of, you know, branded merchandise that is either, uh, you know, at the park or were sold through the, through the city. Uh, but also how that can also be used in the physical sense of location-based, you know, signage at each cabin. So this can, this brand, uh, you know, matches with the Pilot Knoll Park, uh, you know, font and messaging, but then it has that, uh, additional, uh, customized feature of the cabins app. Um, you know, this, this could then be customized even further where these little icons are specific, you know, elements to those six unique cabins that are on site. Concept two was another play into kind of that negative space that the visual of those cabins could make. Um, the big parent brand or thought here was, you know, the tree cover being one of the significant elements within this, uh, within this park. And so that was kind of just the, the abstract, uh, view of that being, you know, you could look at this one way and say it's a big green blob, you could look at it another way and say it's, it's the tree cover. So as you start to look at the parent brand and as the negative space starts to reflect the cabins, we started to play with what that could look like in either the reservation system or how that system, uh, you know, is advertised, you know, either online or in marketing material as well. We have a couple of mockups of some potential, you know, signage, you know, whether that was, you know, following the tree theme of the names or how that goes into the rest of the parent brand, um, how we start naming, uh, features within the park. So this was concept two. Concept three kind of played on the, one of the most significant recognizable cabin shapes was of course the A-frame. But we also didn't want it to be just, you know, specifically the A-frame, you know, representing the parent brand of this park. So we also feel like that's just, you know, an iconic camping shape, if you will. It could be a tent, it could be a, you know, a lean-to, it could be just that, that, uh, you know, that triangle was very distinct in this branded, um, you know, this logo mark. So just another test in terms of, uh, you know, visual vernacular to, to represent camping in the park. Um, again, testing some ideas of scale and, and options on, on signage. The effort here is more about looking at these families and just deciding a direction to go. You know, all of these could be applied in kind of the same manner. It's really just a preference of, of the group and kind of where we want to move. You know, this is an example of the three next to each other and this kind of, you know, I have one more slide that shows the, uh, park board's feedback. But we showed this slide to, to kind of compare the three next to each other, also, um, start to elaborate on the other usage of this brand of how it starts to become, you know, wayfinding throughout the park as you reach the different destinations. Um, you know, and how that could start to, to present itself. Um, when we met with park board last week, we did hear some, some general feedback and we'd love to hear yours too this evening. Um, sorry to skew your, your idea and see their, their feedback first, but I think this can help, uh, you know, this dialogue go along. Um, and that's, that's kind of the purpose is to have them help, help you, uh, with some of these decision-making. So, uh, you know, they did have some, some preference for, uh, concept one. Uh, their second choice was, was, uh, sorry, this is a, a type of, it was actually concept three. We, um, they liked the, the, uh, the triangle one and the, uh, the first concept. Um, they did like the idea of the parent brand and then kind of breaking it down into sub-brands of uniquely, uh, identifying the cabins or having a cabinet-type, you know, sub-brand that could be marketed. Uh, park board would like to see further development of this sub-brand into the park physically, um, as well as the marketing item. So in terms of how, you know, the, I'm sorry, these signs, you know, the larger format signs start to merge down the, through the park and, and start to, uh, really represent the rest of the park as well. So with that said, you know, really just here to kind of hear some open dialogue and answer any questions if you have any on this, but really it's just kind of a conversation on, on some preferences. Is there?
It's on a point. Peninsula going into the lake.
Yes.
Nor do we talk lake other than the boat ramp. Um, was that considered for the overall branding?
The actual, the, the water.
Highlighting water. Trees are great, but water is even better.
Yeah. I think that, you know, when we started with the Pilot Knoll Park brand at the very beginning, um, you know, this, just the word Pilot Knoll Park, you know, and then graphically showing that. But I think that's a great comment that we could take back to the team and think about that as well.
Right.
I like number one because on the east side of town, we have Double Tree Ranch and that bookends with the tree on Pilot Knoll Park.
You like, you like it with the tree on the?
Yeah, I like it on the tree because we've got Double Tree Ranch, which is one type of on the east side, right? And we're bookending it on the other side with, with a tree on the other and it kind of plays, complements one another. And it's easy, that's an easy logo to print. Um, with the, not so much the yellow will wash out, but that's an easy logo to print and to manufacture and, and stuff.
On the east side, any comments?
Not really.
Can you move, uh, go back to where the concepts are sitting next to each other?
Yeah.
Yeah, one for sure. I think, I don't think two or three really fit into it. I like John's idea of, of somehow putting water into it and then we go back again. It'd be easier if all these were together. I like, um, the individual color schemes matched to the specific cabins, not just one, and that can go back to the app as well. So each, each cabin has its own specific color to make it easier to track and that could be posted throughout. So right there.
That kind of came into, sorry, this one.
Yes.
This branded badges.
Yeah, and so, so each specific one, yeah, I didn't even notice that they were different up there. But yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be a great way to add a, a sub-brand of separating them for sure.
And to play on that, having a brand for each cabin is a great marketing tool for, um, when kids go to places, that you've got five different things to visit and scavenger hunts and you collect. We go places, you go, this is a really good, that gets your, more of your tweens and your elementary kids excited to come back.
I buy stickers of every campsite.
We have them on our truck for camp every year.
And if you put the number of the cabin inside the look of the cabin, maybe that would help, that would help old people like me.
Yeah, and again, I, I agree. I think the, the furthering of this into the physical realm is, is going to get into that detail.
Go back to the very beginning where the three were, well, see, I like, I love the sign. I like everything that's clean. I don't want it to be a lot, it's too much. I'm afraid the tree might be too much. Um, but I do like the idea of the tree tying it to Double Tree Ranch Park. I love that, because it's just clean.
And to that point, and that's not to say that these four and, and Lori, you know, could be used in different element, you know, different levels of expression at the park. Maybe on the sign, you know, it doesn't have the tree, but it is just the simple nomenclature, the name. And then as it gets, you know, spread throughout the different marketing, you know, uses, it kind of, it, it grows into different, um, levels.
I'm a visual, I have to see it. So when I see it on the sign like that, I like that.
It was, if it was going back, like I said, to what John said, it, it might be worth, if you wanted to keep the tree, you do it from a, essentially from a water view where you have the water first and then going up on the shore and showing the trees and the cabins if you wanted a, um, I guess, an all-marked logo slash picture to go with it.
Sure. What about doing a play on our actual city logo, which has?
The water.
The water. Which is not exactly the same because it's just a portion of our city.
You transform it to that, um, more retro, take it and to the time machine and retrofines it to match more that.
It's just branding, I mean, it's what you see when you're in 2499. You see how the building, you see how it looks.
Yeah.
Just don't ever change the logo. When you do that, then.
Yeah, but there, the art people may know how to take it and make it not the same, but same.
It's the one where there are links to each other. But what I'm hearing is some, you know, again, some preference to this concept. But I think, I think this is the perfect time to then explore how, how to weave the, the lake or the shoreline or, you know, let's dive into this one a little bit more, you know, and, and bring that back as, as some.
The metal too ties into the metal on the barn. Like they have a lot of similarities, but they're not the same. I mean, it ties in, it, to all the other things.
I'm not crazy about number two. I like number two.
Unless the green was the shape of Lake.
It's like a blob is not.
Somebody could say that.
Maybe. It's just true.
The first one is much more visually appealing, you know, to sure.
Yes.
There's something about the third one that just doesn't, like, you know, it might be the.
It's like Whataburger.
Just the design.
There you go, it looks like Whataburger, that's what it is. And it reminds me of the house on, on Highland, right there. Like, we got a big A-frame, but it's Whataburger, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Well, then maybe that's a good thing.
It's but Whataburger.
It drives people.
Yeah, they can have like a little.
Yeah, I think this direction is very helpful. Um, I think this is where, you know, we were kind of leaning, uh, you know, with, with park board as well as staff and kind of wanted to bring it to you all to get some feedback and, uh, this helps to be kind of in, in line with, with everybody else's opinions too. Next step?
Why the colors?
Of the neutral colors or, or the colors of the badge.
Yeah.
You know, it, it, part of that is just a, you know, a, a, an attempt on unify or unique, um, elements within that badging system. I think that this is more a branded color scheme of those natural, you could say that's a lake tone or just kind of the natural tones. Um, what we can do is, as we dive into one of these more, I think it's going to express a lot more of that in terms of this next kind of iteration of this. And Lori, kind of speak to that too, is how a brand can then be expressed through narrative that you're not going to see it every day within the, the logo itself, but it'll have that story behind it as well.
My limited understanding of branding through my years is, I understand the consistency of color, consistency of design, um, and, and keeping that at the forefront. So when they see it, they remember, right? So I'm curious why the colors of our current branding, our symbol of the city, weren't used in these, in this context as well.
I didn't, we didn't talk about the colors and the brandings. The, the columns of our city logo are very primary colors and they don't really lend themselves to the nature feel that they're trying to portray here. What we're looking at with the branding with the park is creating its own specific brand, creating page, uh, that links from our website to a specific page that is just for Pilot Knoll Park. Um, and, you know, we like that it says Highland Village, Texas, because that brings it back to our city. Uh, but if you would be able to get to this site to see what's available, make your reservations and everything as a standalone, but it would also be linked through on the city website. But as, as you've said, the consistency in colors, um, keeping things one color for easy printing, um, is very beneficial. Going more in-depth and more detail on the website, um, is where a lot of that information would be. And, you know, another option for bringing in the lake would be, uh, Pilot Knoll Park on Lake Louisville.
Another name, yeah.
Well, I've thought about that, but we also, we use Highland Village, I don't want to have.
You could even say Pilot Knoll Park on the lake.
On the lake.
In my thought, that was a better, better idea, yeah.
And, and that way we would keep the clean look of the tree and, and the wording and.
Yeah, I like this.
This was our favorite as well.
Adding on the lake.
Golden Pond.
What'd you say?
Golden Pond.
Appreciate the feedback and we'll have some other concepts that can definitely lean into that, that thought and, and tease that out. Not Golden Pond.
Please don't, don't humor him, nobody laugh.
I'm sure there's copyright infringements.
Right.
Thank you.
This is good, thank you. Moving on past the Golden Pond, um, discuss nomination of candidates for appointment to the district central appraisal district board directors.
Angie? So we received, um, word from DCAD that, um, basically they, I know we just did this last year where we nominated and voted for Alex Buck. Um, and usually it's every two years. However, they recently, legislation has changed and they're going to four-year terms. So therefore all, um, five members of the board that are nominated and voted on by the taxing jurisdictions are included in with this, um, grouping. So council has an opportunity to nominate up to five qualified individuals to be considered for the DCAD board of directors. Um, I have had one, I've had several inquiries, however, only one person actually submitted their information, which was Alex Buck. Um, and again, he was nominated and elected last year. Um, so I provided you guys with his resume and cover letter that kind of outlines what he's been doing while serving on the board and why he would be a good candidate. Um, the process for this is that, um, cities can nominate individuals and then, um, DCAD will come back, uh, later in October and provide to us a list of nominees that council could then vote on. Um, now you don't have to nominate anyone, you could just vote for the list of nominees that are, um, provided from other cities. Um, but if you would like to, this is an opportunity to do so. And again, one, one last thing I do want to mention, it's a, every, and I may need your help on how to, how to clarify this a little bit better. Um, every city has X number of votes and it, it, I don't know the specific details on this and DCAD has not provided that list to us on, like, because we're a smaller entity, we would only get around, like, I think last year we had 47 votes, whereas like Louisville had 145 and Aramont had 145. Um, so where that kind of comes into play is with nominations. If you, um, nominate two or three or five individuals, do you want to come back and split those votes up later, um, when that time comes next month? Um, so that's kind of something to think about when you're nominating. That's all there is on this, yeah, so.
You have to remember the past too, if, because we have so few votes, our votes alone do, do nothing.
Right.
We really need to put our votes with somebody else. And I believe that was why the last time when Alex Buck was nominated, we knew that I believe Louisville ISD and the city of Louisville and others.
There were a lot of you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you have to partner your votes with somebody else as to.
Right. That would impact you.
So this is on action?
There is an item, it's not on action, if council chooses to nominate anyone. Again, that's your choice if you wish to do so.
And I, I would hope we would nominate, well, he's a Highland Village resident and he's served, he's served well in the board, so. But if that's, since we only have that one and we want to move that to consent.
I'd like to move it to consent. Do we have to nominate, how are we going to nominate him on consent if it's just a straight vote?
We have to say.
Yeah, whenever that.
Include his name.
Motion for approving consent, agenda items.
Do you have to actually read out the consent, consent to the agenda items instead of saying a motion to approve consent, agenda items 13 through 15 or whatever?
13 to 15 include as the person in, provide them. Kind of including and then read it out with an.
Okay. And then we have discussed appointment of board definition member. The committee of industry partners, board of directors, and the committee of community of citizens, current chapter, because board index section of 4B goes to 037. I don't know if everybody's out there. Ouchie. So I guess maybe first before we, you know, the third. Is there anyone that is not a reappointment that anybody wants to have removed? For ten minutes or what? We can get past that if, if there's not. I didn't see. You may shake your head. Look at me. So there's no one that you want to remove?
No, I have some that I would like to see not be retained.
Because are they up for reappointment or are they midterm? So what I'm saying is, if they're not up for.
Like, whose term is not up this year that you would like removed?
One has got a term that's up, the other's term is not up.
One that whose term, okay. So I guess we will have that discussion.
Are they aligned with the ones that are, we can discuss in close session, the ones.
I don't know. Someone on.
It's, it's, it's P and Z.
Okay. So it would be, we can do that in a closed session? All right. So let's just start, so the ones that we can do in a closed session are Highland Village Community, 4B, P and Z, and CBA. Let's just start with Board of Ethics. And, I'm going to let y'all throw out names or, can we throw out names?
I had.
Go ahead.
I just had maintaining, I believe Debbie Barber is already serving in that position. And then just filling Molly McGahey for the open spot.
That's exactly who I had. For, for.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Somebody let me know.
Who's another name? Molly.
Molly McGahey.
Molly McGahey. Are you here, you?
Oh, I was just. Looking at some of the choices that everybody had. Just, you can read some of the applicants.
Too much.
So we're going to raise, Debbie Barber, you keep it up with. For us or not, you can round them down?
No, we're just good.
Um, yeah, Mike Sodio also, I think that is a first choice and Joe Furtis as well.
I had Mike, but.
You had who?
Mike, but I also looked at all the boards and commissions representing all the different neighborhoods. And one of my things was no more than two people from the same, from the same, yeah, HOA or neighborhood.
Okay. But you have Mike in.
Cause he wanted it and he was not.
I have Mike, and I have Mike somewhere else too.
What's Mike?
Mike Sodio.
Sodio?
Yeah.
I had him up there, but he's also pretty somewhere else.
He, he's not in either one. And my, my thing was to make sure everybody's represented is, is Molly's in Briar Hill and Mike's in Village Estates, so that doesn't.
So does it work though with your, the way you're looking at it? Okay.
Or what do you think?
On Golden Pond?
Holding fire to the.
Okay. All right. So then, and let's go down to Parks and Rec Advisory. So I know that Tyler Gump has been an alternate. And I don't know how many.
There's several terms.
Several terms have been alternates.
I mean, yeah.
So I would like to move him up.
That's what I had.
Yeah.
I had him moved up.
I had him moving up, yeah.
Yeah.
You moved one?
I had him moving up as well.
Perfect. And then also moving up Leslie Andrews, who was an alternate to serve on, like, I have place one for Leslie Andrews, Tyler Gump for place three, and reappointing Hogan Heathington to the same board. So that opens up the two alternate places.
Yes.
So you're in, in the, in the actual, not the alternate, alternate places, you would have Hogan, you would have Leslie, Tyler, Hogan, Kevin, and Dave.
Right. Since Kevin and Dave are not up for reappointment.
Right. So you, okay.
So then you have alternate place one and alternate place two open.
And I have Maria Dennison as one of the alternates.
But she lives in Highland Shores. That's five Highland Shores people on Parks.
Okay. That's a good point.
That's heavy.
That's a good point. Who does, does anybody else have a name?
I had Ryan Melson.
I did too.
I had Ryan Melson.
Ryan Melson.
And he lives in Clearwater.
And then Omar Tamir.
Oh, you had Omar there?
Yeah.
I had Omar on.
Omar.
Well, he's in Northwood, so yeah.
I had him in another position as well.
Alexis, okay. Anybody else? Two, and they had Ryan Melson?
Melson.
Yeah.
And then Omar? Is that? Omar Tamir?
I have, I have Tamir someplace else.
Okay. I had him somewhere.
My, my other alternate that I had on there was Neil Burdette. And I saw that one too, because he lives on, he lives right here, so he kind of is dead center of everybody.
Yeah, he's Clearwater.
So I had Ryan Melson and Neil Burdette going into the Parks Advisory Board. And whatever, whatever fashion, alternate.
What was Omar's, what was his number one? Do we have?
His number one was 4B.
4B.
And then his number two?
Was Parks and number three was PZ, P and Z.
Okay. And then your, what was your, your person that you had plugged in?
Neil Burdette was the other person along with Ryan Melson that I had with Parks and Rec.
That was Burdette's number two.
Yes.
I'd be okay with Burdette up on Parks.
And when we talked to Tamir, he, he had expressed that, which along with, I assume everybody else, that he would be looking for an active board. So that's why I had him at Parks for two and then someplace else for one.
Yeah, so considering Patrick Finch from, moving from 4B to Parks. Cause he wanted to change.
He did.
And 4B kind of ties into Parks. And that's Sunday Haas. We don't have any Sunday Haases.
I had forgotten. Yeah. Move Finch out.
I'd be okay with Finch going to Parks.
And Louis Burdette?
Yes.
I'd be good with that.
So then we've got, yeah.
So are we putting Omar on Parks?
Leave him off right now. Look Omar off, it would be Ryan Melson and.
Patrick Finch.
Patrick Finch coming off of 4B into that.
Okay. Do you have a preference on who goes into alternate place one and who doesn't alternate place two, because they're staggered terms, so.
Ryan Melson in alternate place one, because he'll be up at the beginning of next year.
And then, okay, Ryan Melson and, where's the other person? Sorry.
Patrick Finch.
So that would take, moving up Tyler Gump from alternate place two, so when would that appointment be?
Say that again. So.
So if we leave Tyler Gump up to a voting.
Right.
Position.
Right. So if you put Patrick Finch and Tyler's in one spot, you have two years. And then Ryan Melson, if you put him in alternate place one, that term expires next year.
Are y'all good with that? Are y'all good with that? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So we have Leslie moving to place one, Hogan Heathington, which being reappointed, Tyler Gump moving to place three, Ryan Melson alternate place one, and Patrick Finch alternate place.
Bill, are you, are you good with that?
It's like you're in a sentence.
Okay, why don't we try that again?
I think you had also mentioned Alexis as well, maybe.
Well, the, I think the way that they're, they're talking about the placement of where people live makes a lot of sense too.
Yeah, Alexis is another Highland Shores.
Okay.
So the, the, the main thing is the two alternates moving up.
Right.
You know, especially Tyler. Yeah.
So, I didn't, I'm going to be honest, I didn't see where anybody lived.
I did. You know me.
I'm, I'm.
Okay, so did we look at that with Board of Ethics?
Yes.
With Molly?
Molly's Briar Hill. So you've got.
Debbie Barber with.
Highland Hills.
And she's Highland Hills?
Highland Hills, Briar Hill, Castlewood, and two Highland Shores.
So. Then we have. I guess it's, I guess, I guess we go to closed session. That's planning and zoning. ZBA, planning and zoning.
4B.
And 4B are the only ones left, right? So with that, we're going to find the wording. So here, one, two, in the closed session, under, what is it? Being, section 551.074, the rate of payment removal evaluation duty to public officers and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning board of the Department and Board of Urban Development, and time is 6:58.
And time is 6:58.
Okay. And so, last council, any clarification? Or action against this? Scott, I had asked all the village trees, really, if it were all village trees, or if it's just any village tree from Greensprings to Delaware?
Yes.
Okay.
It's southern.
Okay. That's my question. Does anybody else have any clarification? I know. If anybody wants to move anything?
Moving Alex Buck to consent.
Okay. So, you're going to do it?
Item 21.
Anybody else? Question, comments? Okay. We are adjourned at 7:47. We can be... Carter. Good evening. Wow. Gosh, we didn't get out. We were running a little late. Let me apologize for that. But it looks like we have a whole classroom here tonight. Are you Miss Petkoff's class again?
Yes.
I need to be invited to that class. I need to... So, you tell her I want to come talk to the class. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is September the 24th. It is 7:56. And again, I'm sorry that we are running a little bit behind. But the records show all council members are present. And we are going to get started with a prayer led by council member Rhonda Hurst. And then she's going to lead us in our pledges.
All rise. We are going to say the Lord's Prayer. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
The thine?
Kingdom and the power and glory yours now and forever. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. National pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Thank you. So, next we have mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Does anyone have anything? I know I've been getting notices that we have Pilot Knoll coming up. Pilot Knoll meeting on October the 2nd, which is a... Which is... Hang on. I was going to look and see what the notice said. What, 6:00 to 7:30 at Pilot Knoll?
Yes, Mayor.
To talk about the boat ramp. Boat ramp.
It's to talk about the improvements to the boat ramp area. That's a part of the planning grant. So, we're inviting the community to come in and see what we're doing and provide some input.
Perfect. Thank you. So, hopefully, everybody can attend that. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. Well, if not, we're going to move on to city manager and staff report.
Sorry, Mayor. No, we'd be mad if I did not talk with my microphone. Just a couple of things. Of course, in October, that begins our concert, the Park Series. The first one will be October 5th. And the band will be Lover, which is a Toulousaw Tribute Band. Bands play from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Bring your lawn chairs and blankets. Grab dinner or a snack from one of our food truck vendors. And enjoy a free concert under the stars. And then go to check... You can go to hvparks.com for the band lineup with all the details. Now, the last one will be the Texas Fall and PD Tribute Event on October 19th. And this will include a 5K run in the morning and in the afternoon, a police and civilian bike race, kid ride with a cop, kids' own vendors, food trucks, and live music. And we are excited to share the night. We'll finish with a special fireworks show that was part of the rescheduling to celebrate Highland Village. So, look forward to that for everybody. And then also want to talk about Briar Hill Boulevard tree planting. You may have noticed that there's been some work in the median along Briar Hill Boulevard. The Friends of Highland Park Foundation is partnering with the city to plant 13 native trees in this area. And the planting will take place on November 9th. And we'll have more details on this project soon. We'd love everybody to come out on the 9th when those are planted. And that is all I have.
Okay. Do we have a...
And we do have video.
We have a video?
Oh, my gosh. Thank you for coming in. I'm so excited. So, tell me again what special event you're here for? I have a charity gala. I'm Taylor. And today, I'm at the most adorable shop, Tallulah's Party Prom and Gift. We're going to have a great time. Come on. Proms and parties and homecoming are some of the most important things to young girls. Also, having that perfect dress for the perfect occasion is really important. Well, I'm with Heather Vernal, and she is the owner of Tallulah's Party Prom and Gift. Hi.
Thank you for coming today.
Yeah. Well, thank you for letting me try on this gorgeous gown.
Yes. You look stunning, and it is one of our favorites.
Thank you. Tell me about the inspiration, Heather, for this gorgeous shop.
I was laid off November of last year. And I told my husband I would never work for anyone ever again. I've always dreamt of owning a boutique.
Here it is now. And it is beautiful here, Heather. Tell me a little bit about who this shop is for and who are your frequent customers?
We are serving women and girls for all of their special occasion needs. And then we do have a few fun little casual things as well, because that's where I get to fulfill my love and desire to have a true boutique. And so, I also want to have things that keep people coming in here time and time again and throughout the year, not just once a year.
Heather, you mentioned wanting to inspire people to come back. You actually have a social club. Tell me a little bit more about that.
I've been asked even by my own husbands, like, "Explain to me Tallulah Social Club. Is there a membership? Is it a club? Do people show up? What do you do?" Well, not so much. It's just, again, part of a movement. This summer, we did a sorority informational session, which was geared towards girls going off to rush. And so, we provided, you know, opportunities for them to learn from girls who are currently in sororities at different schools. So, we will be doing many different events that bring people out and bring people into Tallulah's. And so, that's kind of what Tallulah Social Club is.
You've got such a variety of designs here, Heather. Tell me about the different seasons that your shop can satisfy.
We, obviously, you walk in during a high season, which I call that, you know, our homecoming and prom. And you're going to think that that's all we carry, but we don't. And so, I always encourage women and girls to look around, because we offer gala dresses, ball gown dresses, black tie event. And so, there's, you know, pajamas, birthday gifts. I mean, it really is everything. And so, there's just something for everybody, for every occasion. It's not just for the girls. That's what I always tell the moms. I'm like, "You just come on back, because it is not just for the girls."
Heather, where can girls learn more about you?
Tallulah's Party and Prom dot com.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks for coming and sitting down and chatting with me.
Yes. Ooh, yum. Ooh. I found the perfect dress, and now I'm a member of Tallulah Social Club. You have to come see this beautiful boutique here in Highland Village. We'll see you next time.
Okay. So do... Got all you have?
That's it.
Okay. We're going to do visitor comments. Smiley, do we have any visitor comments?
No.
No? Okay. Well, then, we're going to move on to consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Councilors, does anyone want to move anything off or on to consent?
Mayor, I'd like to move item 21, which is Resolution 2024-3144, nominating Alex Buck for election to place on the Denton County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Okay. So, the items on consent are number 13, consider Resolution 2024-3138, authorizing the city manager to renew the employee health and dental insurance plans with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. Number 14, consider Resolution 2024-3139, authorizing an interlocal agreement with Texas Political Subdivision Joint Self Insurance Fund for the purpose of providing workers' compensation insurance for fiscal year 2024-2025. And number 21, consider Resolution 2024-3144, nominating Alex Buck as a candidate for election to a place on the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. place on the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Mr. Fierrenza?
I am moving that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, we have a motion. Counsel, do I have a second?
Your second.
First, Ms. Hurst. We have a motion and a second. Counsel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. He carries 7-0. Action. We did meet in closed session under Section 551.074, but that is also on the agenda, so we will, we will take that action at that point on the agenda. So. Number 16, consider Resolution 2024-3140 approving the appointment by the city manager of Ricky Scott Green as fire chief for the city of Highland Village. Oh, sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to say thank you so much for having me present, Ricky Scott Green, this evening. Over the summer, fire chief position became vacant, and we needed to recruit. And so we were very successful in our recruitment process. We had over 20 qualified applicants. Those applicants completed a question, well, chosen applicants completed questionnaire, phone interview, as well as in-person interviews. Those interviews consisted of an executive panel. The mayor participated as well, fire personnel as well. Ricky Scott Green actually goes by Scott, so you can call him Chief Scott Green. He has completed all the pre-employment process. Our city charter, Section 510, states that council must affirm the appointment of fire chief, so that's why we're here this evening. City Manager Paul Stevens is going to speak a little bit about Scott.
Kim, thank you very much. I wanted to kind of present first, just to give everyone an idea of the process that we went through. It was a very in-depth process, and there were three different panels that the applicants interviewed with. And despite all that, Scott still decided to come work for us. So I do want to thank you, Mayor, Chief Rhym, all the other directors who participated in the panel, and all the fire personnel. And I think all of us together made a very, very good decision in this applicant. Scott is here tonight with his wife, Vicki, his daughter, Gracie, and most importantly, his grandson, Zay. He looks like he's getting pretty active and fitting right in. So Scott has a 27-year track record with the city of University Park, and I could read you all sorts of things, but there's a few that I do want to read to you. Scott was the firefighter of the year in 2007, 2008, and 2009. He was the employee of the year in 2018. He was a silver employee of the year in 2018 and 2023. So I know university's, University Park's loss is certainly our gain. Scott is also a graduate of Legg Dallas High School. They live in Ponder, so they have roots here in Denton County, so we're very excited about that. So, Mayor and Council, as Kim had mentioned, the charter does require this appointment to be ratified by the city council, and I would ask for your positive vote for that.
Well, Counsel, I'd like to make this motion that we consider Resolution 2024-3140 approving the appointment of, by the city manager of Ricky Scott Green as fire chief for the city of Highland Village. Do I have a second? Oh, it looks like everybody wanted a second, so just pick one.
Almost a second.
Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carry 7-0. Welcome to the family. I don't know if you want to?
Yeah, please, Scott, if you would introduce yourself and...
Bring your, bring the grandbaby up here.
Yeah.
I want to hold the baby.
He sells the show every time, anyway. Next week, I'll go before University Park City Council and do the same thing, primarily not to be recognized, but to say thank you to them for 27 years of me being able to do what I love, which is serve others and raise my beautiful family. I've got four other kids that couldn't be here today, two other grandkids. You want that, don't you, buddy? But it's to go back and say thank you. And for y'all, I would just say thank you. When I was looking to retire from University Park, I was looking for a city that was very similar, one that values, had the similar values, and, you know, circles around community. And that's what I found here. And all through the process, I was just impressed by the personnel at the fire department and all the department heads and everyone that I interviewed with. And it just seemed like such a natural fit. So thank you.
And the mayor, of course.
And the mayor especially, especially, yes. Absolutely.
Well, welcome. Welcome to the family.
Thank you.
We are looking forward to, and you get started here when?
Monday.
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 Wow.
Yeah.
We're very excited.
Yes, I am too. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Scott.
Someone's ready for bed.
Me.
You.
Oh, you're not talking about me.
You're further.
Right. Okay, then we're going to go on to Consider Ordinance 2024-1313, amending the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance, amending the regulations relating to the use and development of a 3.96 plus or minus acre tract of land located in the F. Hyatt survey, abstract number 559, commonly known as 102 Barnett Boulevard, from SF40 single-family residential to planned development district for a patio home use. And this is the second and final read. Mr. Kristin?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item was presented September 10th council meeting with two amendments on the ordinance. The city attorney has added those two amendments to the ordinance, and this is the second and final read.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Fierrenza?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve ordinance number 2024-1313, amending the regulations relating to the use and development of 3.96 acres located in the F. Hyatt survey, abstract number 559, commonly known as 102 Barnett Boulevard, enacting a planned development district for patio homes.
Okay. Counsel, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Freester. Okay, Counsel. Is there any further discussion?
This is a public vote?
No, there's no public hearing. Public hearing was at the first meeting. Okay. No further questions, discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Six-two. I mean, five-two. All right, thank you. Okay. All right. So he carries five to two. All right. Oh, you're, I'm like, why are you still there? But you've got the next one, too.
It's the Scott Show tonight. Fire chief, me.
Yeah. Consider Resolution 2024-3141, awarding and authorizing a contract with Four Star Excavating Inc. for construction of the Forest Main Replacement Project, lift station number two and lift station number seven. Mr. Kristin?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city of Highland Village has 10 lift stations within the corporate limits. Two of these lift stations over the past several years have experienced some pipe failures in their force mains. That station is lift station two in the Highland Shores 6P subdivision, and lift station seven in the Castlewood subdivision. We identified these projects several years ago. In previous council action in April 25th, 2023, we approved engineering for design of forced main replacements for these two stations. We have finished the plans. We bid the project. We received three bids. Four Star Excavating is our, is our responsive low bid in the amount of $906,2,320 even. The, the construction estimate for this project was $950,000 to $1 million. I'll take any questions you may have.
All right. Counsel, do we have a motion?
I just have one question.
Oh.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kristin, is there a contingency built into that project, the bid itself for the budget?
There is not a contingency. The resolution authorizes the city manager to approve any change orders up or down within the limits of the law.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh. What's the, when's the start of construction, and how long will it take?
We have not had our contract signed yet or the pre-construction meeting, so I anticipate late October, 1st of November, possibly to get a start date going. This contract is going to have 180 days in it.
In the life of the improvements, well, they, it looks like the last time anything was done was '93?
On lift station two?
Yeah.
Correct. The, the original lift station was built, when 6P was built, in '88. And some modifications with the Highland Shores growing happened in 1993. And it's, and since then, we've had some pipe failures that, that need to be addressed.
So this was, we could reasonably, reasonably expect another 25 years out of that?
With the, the new PVC pipe that they use in modern world, they don't have a life expectancy of what it's going to last. So it could be 50, 75, 100 years.
Good.
There will be other failures.
Oh, yeah.
Mechanical.
That other pipe.
It's just the pipe.
With that, I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2024-3141, awarding and authorizing contract to Four Star Excavating for a Forest Main Replacement Project at lift station number two and number seven.
Okay. Counsel, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Hurst. Rhonda seconded. All right, Counsel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Carry 7-0. You're going to stick around. Consider Resolution 2024-... It is the Scott Show. 2024-3142, awarding and authorizing a contract with JGO Public Company for the 2024 Asphalt Overlay and Pilot Knoll Park RV Circle Overlay Project. Mr. Kristin?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city budgets, budgets annually for an asphalt overlay project that we identified through our pavement condition index program. This year, we identified several streets throughout the city, as well as some parks money got thrown into the, the mix this year to replace some asphalt in the Pilot Knoll RV parking area. Counsel action, previous council action approved the engineering. I'm sorry, we didn't have to bring the engineering to council. It was under $50,000. We designed the project and, and put it out to bid. We received four bids. The lowest responsible bid is JGO Public. JGO has done a lot of work in the city, so we're, we're, we know them well. The budget for the project is just over $400,000. It came in at $397,915.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
How long, I do.
Oh, okay.
How long is this project going to take?
Asphalt overlay projects, we give them 60 days contract time. They generally finish earlier, weather permitting.
When is the anticipated start?
Again, we got to have contracts signed and have a pre-construction meeting, so weather permitting, it'd be November.
Will the park be closed down during the construction?
I'm sorry.
Will that part of the park be closed?
We'll work with the Parks Direct Phil to either minimize traffic, or I doubt they're going to close it down. Asphalt overlaying that little section is not going to take a half a day.
Okay. Anybody else?
Make a motion.
Nope.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-3142, awarding and authorizing a contract with JGO Public Company for the 2024 Asphalt Overlay and Pilot Knoll Park RV Circle Overlay Project.
Okay. Counsel, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Sean. Sean. All right, thank you. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carry 7-0. We are going to do Consider Resolution 2024-3143, amending the city master fee schedule by amending and adding certain park and recreation fees. Lozano?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is a code of ordinances provides that we shall be charged, to be charged to the general public and individuals and groups to the extent reasonable to recover a portion of direct or indirect costs associated with delivery of parks and recreation programs, services, or events. And then fees are to be evaluated from time to time and revised to remain competitive. User fees are intended to, to be equitably assessed, and fees for residents shall be kept to a minimum, and non-residents may, excuse me, non-residents may be required to pay a higher fee because of their non-resident status, and it's because they do not own property within the city, against which city ad valorem taxes may be addressed. So the Parks and Recreation Department shall have some flexibility in adding programs and increasing participation numbers for existing programs, and omitting programs through the year pursuant to the cost recovery goals established here within. And there is the list on those cost recovery goals. So as you know, this year, we added, or we converted the kitchen at the Sergeant Dennis Oliver Event Center into, into a party room. So we're, we're doing a couple of things here. One, we want to adjust the rental rate to party room 102 from $30, for a resident from $30 to $40 an hour, and then a non-resident from $60 to $70 an hour, an hour. And then we want to add a rental rate for the newly renovated barn party room 103 at a resident rate of $30 an hour and a non-resident rate of $60 an hour. And that was based off the square footage of the room, and then also the amenities that they offer. The room 103 is in direct line to the kitty area, and it's very amenable to that versus the larger party room is more amenable to the larger splash pad area and does not have a direct access to the splash pad. So we felt those numbers were good. In addition to that, to the benchmarking that we did with the other cities, we were in line, well, as close as we can be. And so we brought this through, I bought this through the Park Board on September 16th last week, 2024, in the Parks Recreation Advisory Board meeting. And, and basically what they have asked is, are they supported it, and requested that the city, our recommend approval to city council to adopt the amended fee schedule as presented. And I'll take any. Yes, ma'am.
What is the percentage of residence versus non-residence rental-wise?
So I don't have the exact resident, non-resident, but what I can tell you is the revenue. The revenue from October 1st, 2023, to September 10th, 2024, we basically earned $34,000 in revenue for 101 and 102. And for the all-day package, we only had approximately four individuals that received the all-day package or that purchased the all-day package for a revenue of $3,400. So I'm not prepared to provide you with that data right now, the residents versus non-residents, but I can...
I think I was one of the all-day people.
Okay.
I just, well, I just want to say that when I've had events out there, people come from all over Denton County. Last time, we had people all the way from Wise County come. And they were like, this place is beautiful. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, you should rent it. It's really reasonable. And so that's why I wanted to know is, I'm always selling, right? Like, so it was, it was a big, they loved the lawn. We had a wonderful day the last one we did. And it was just, people didn't know this little gem was here. And so it's, it's a really good marketing tool to bring people in to our city. That, I mean, we had people from Parker, Wise, Denton, and Collin County all came in and thought it was beautiful.
That's good to hear.
That's good. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? Mr. Freester?
Questions? I was going to make a motion if we're ready.
Make a motion.
Shoot. Okay. I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution 2024-3143, amending the city's master fee schedule by amending and adding certain parks and recreation fees.
All right. Counsel, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie's 7-0. Oh, I'm sorry.
Give me a second.
It's the two Fs that sit beside each other. Fierrenza and Feaster is like, ah. Okay, so we move number 21 to consent. We're going to go to 22. Review and discuss the attendance record and performance of city board and commission members and consider removal of board and commission members prior to the completion of their current terms pursuant to Code of Ordinances, Section 2.04.037. Mr. Kixmiller?
I've got two items. The first item is I would like to recommend that we remove Jared Christensen from the Planning and Zoning Board. That's my recommendation.
Okay, so we have a motion to remove Jared Christensen from planning and zoning. Counsel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Fierrenza seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, six-one? Okay. And then, we're going to go to number 23.
Sir, Mayor, there was a second. You had a second. I'm on second.
Oh, you have a...
In light of looking at the current boards, I personally am going to resign from the Highland Village Development Corporation Board, 4B Board, and I'd just like to put that out in front of Counsel this evening.
So, we have to vote on that as well, Counsel?
Make a motion that we accept his resignation.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the resignation.
I'll second.
Mr. Feaster seconds that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie's 7-0. So weird.
It is weird.
We still love you, John.
That's a stretch.
It did make it sound like we're kicking it off, didn't it?
I know, it's like, he's my workroom buddy.
Consider Resolution 2024-3145, appointing members to various positions on the Board of Ethics, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, Zoning Board of Adjustment, and Highland Village Community Development Corporation. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Who's reading it?
Whoever wants to. You want to? You want to make a motion and read it?
I'll make the motion if you want to read it.
Hand that down. Give that to her.
Well, no, I'm...
I've talked enough today.
Hold on, I got to put my 29-year-old glasses on. All right. City of Highland... Oh, Resolution number 2024-3145, a resolution of the city council of the City of Highland Village, Texas, appointing members to various positions on the Board of Ethics, Highland Village Community Development Corporation, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Zoning Board of Adjustments, and providing an effective date, whereas the city council of the City of Highland Village desires to appoint citizens to serve for terms beginning October 1st, 2024, for positions on various boards and commissions. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Highland Village that the following people are hereby appointed to the indicated positions on the Board of Ethics, with the term commencing October 1st, 2024, and ending as indicated below. Debbie Barber, expiration September 30th, 2026. Molly McGahey, expiration September 30th, 2026. Did I read them all right? And then we make the motion?
Yeah, just keep going. Yeah, we're going to vote on all of them at one time.
The following people are hereby appointed to the indicated positions on the Highland Village Community Development Corporation, with the term commencing October 1st, 2024, and ending as indicated below. Tracy Machado, Citizen Representative, September 30th, 2026. Mike Sadio, Citizen Representative, September 30th, 2026. Robert Feaster, City Council Representative, September 30th, 2026. And Kevin Cox, City Representative, September 30th, 2025. The following board are hereby appointed to the indicated positions on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, with the term commencing October 1st, 2024, and ending as indicated below. Leslie Andrus, Place 1, September 30th, 2026. Hogan Heathington, Place 2, September 30th, 2026. Tyler Gump, Place 3, September 30th, 2026. Patrick Finch, Alternate 2, September 30th, 2026. And Ryan Melson, Alternate 1, September 30th, 2025. The following people are hereby appointed to the indicated positions on the Planning and Zoning Commission, with the term commencing October 1st, 2024, and ending as indicated below. Spencer Wilk, Place 1, September 30th, 2025. Brent Myers, Place 2, September 30th, 2026. Misty Sadio, Place 3, September 30th, 2026. Omir Tamir, Alternate 2, September 30th, 2026. Scott Campbell, Alternate 1, September 30th, 2025. And finally, the following people are hereby appointed to the indicated positions on the Zoning Board of Adjustments, with terms commencing October 1st, 2024, and ending as indicated below. Jim Fuller, Place 4, September 30th, 2026. Russell Jackson, Place 5, September 30th, 2026. Lucy Tarek, Alternate 2, September 30th, 2026. Jeremy Tillery, Alternate 3, September 30th, 2026. And Angela Garcia, Alternate 1, September 30th, 2025.
Counsel, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
Yeah.
All right, Counsel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carrie's 7-0. I'm going to move to late work session. Status report on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Does anyone have anything that they would like? Yes. Yes.
If city manager doesn't have anything, then I've got two items. One is a thank you, one is an ask.
Okay, you go.
All right. So, the first is, I would like to thank Highland Village's very own Dr. Michelle Martz for hosting two tables at last night's Young Life of Highland Village, Lewisville and Plarumound roundup fundraiser. I was actually a member of Young Life while I was at Marcus many, many, many decades ago. It is a great Christian organization that works with students from middle school through college and has specific ministries aimed at ensuring every kid feels a sense of belonging and purpose.
That's awesome. Did you attend last night?
I did.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
Good. And did you have a second thing?
I did have a second one. So, this would be for our city manager. I've noticed recently there's been several articles, more specifically around July and August, regarding increasing GoZone resources in Lewisville and Highland Village. I'd like to have DCTA provide an update on ridership metrics. Unlike in the past where DCTA had presented metrics combining Lewisville and Highland Village, I'd like to have the presentation only include metrics for Highland Village. Now, that could include points of destination outside of Highland Village, but really focused on Highland Village. I'd also like to see if they could incorporate ROI type of metrics so that we can get a sense of what is our return and benefit with regards to the $2.1 million that we will end up spending on DCTA this coming year.
Thank you, Sean. Rhonda?
I would like to... So, January comes our House and State, House and Senate Come-in Session to talk about a workshop about what are legislative priorities specific to Highland Village, because I think there's some probably pretty good ones that we can probably get through that we need to talk about.
Right, and I think we... Do we have that? Is that scheduled?
We don't have it scheduled right now. We will... We normally do that before the session.
Right.
So, yeah, we'll certainly make sure that we have that as an item.
They're already talking. They're already meeting. They're already talking. So, this... We don't want to be the last of the train, because you literally have to get in line